For the school committee, December 6th, 2022. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT, and video/audio recordings are being made. To access the meeting, the access code is 2330-1820037, and the password is Tuesday. This meeting or hearing of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, this meeting-hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. I'm sorry, members of the public with particular interest in any specific item of this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you are identified, to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera. Comments and statements during the public speaking are limited to three minutes. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, what I'd like to do is acknowledge someone who was very special to this school district for many, many, many years. Her name was Dottie Bartlett Eden, and she sadly passed this week from a long battle with cancer. So we'd like to have a moment of silence, please, for Dottie. Thank you. Sorry. I'm not sure if anyone else would like to make any comments about Dottie, but my fond memories are from all of the Pop Warner Cheer competitions. The bus rides absolutely would not have been the same without Dottie driving us there. She was such a positive influence on everybody around her, just always a big smile on her face. You couldn't help but have a good time when you were around her. So again, she will be missed by all. Anyone else want to make any comment? Ms. Simon?
I did not know Dottie, and she didn't drive, I don't think, in my children's district, but she was so well-beloved in the district that I have heard of her and know how beloved she was. And my sympathies to her family and to everyone who knew her. We're just all very glad that we did know her.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to convey to the committee that Dottie was one of the first people I met in Burlington. She was sort of my introduction to the town, and it was a great way to get to know the town. And I'm just, was forever in her debt for showing me sort of the best side of Burlington, and I think that's really what she was, was sort of the best, the best part of Burlington. It was at a time when we were the singular client of a bus company, but to say she was just a bus driver is sort of shortchanging all that she did. It was really funny, I've got the, had the honor of riding on Dottie's bus for several opening days, and it had the feeling to me like she was, it was a family carpool, like she was driving her bus like it was her station wagon, and all the kids in the bus were her family. Every stop, she knew every child's name. Even if the students weren't school age yet, they looked forward to being on Dottie's bus. It was just, again, it was like her own personal vehicle. And then to have her, you know, take that personal vehicle for some of the teams and some of the events that you mentioned. You know, her, you know, again, her bus seven, I think, will ever be, forever be a part of our, part of our culture. The winter sports teams are, they spoke to me today. I think they want to do something to honor her, and they haven't really decided yet, but I told them I would be in full support of their efforts. So our thoughts are going out to her family. I know they must be going through a very difficult time. I wanted to thank them for sharing her with us because that's really what they, really what they did. And so, thank you, and we're thinking of you and wishing you all peace.
Ms. Monaco?
Everybody knew Dottie, and she was, she was just a great person. Sadly, she didn't drive the kids on my side of town, but she drove all the sports teams and I'm sure a lot of the music teams. And all of my children and grandchildren knew her and loved her. And she will be really, really missed. So to her children and family, I just want to say that from all of us, from all the kids that rode her bus, all the teams, we are really sorry for your loss.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I'm going to do the equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child individual. Next item on the agenda is approval of the warrant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention? Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four. Is Melissa, I keep, sorry, I don't have my glasses so I can see you.
Yeah, Melissa's there.
Okay, so we've got, what, five people? So it's four, one, zero. I mean, sorry, four, zero, one. Sorry, one abstained. Are you, Melissa, yes. I see your hand up. Like, we can't hear you. Was your hand up because you were in favor, or are you trying to speak?
I'm trying to speak. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm in favor, yes.
Okay. Actually, because Melissa's remote, I should really do roll call. So Ms. Simon? You're going to abstain, okay, and Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Ms. Masardo, you're an aye? And I'm an aye, so it's four, zero, one. The next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. We have several of them to approve. At this point, I just, Mary Ann does a really, it's a hard job to try and take notes on all this, and I just would like to acknowledge her for all of her note-taking, you know, especially when you're not necessarily familiar with all of the players in town. So again, she's not here this evening, but I did want to acknowledge the job that she's doing for us, and we really appreciate it. So let's start out with the meeting minutes from July 19th, 2022.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's five, zero, zero. Okay, the next one is approval of the minutes from August 16th.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
And I abstain because I was not at the meeting. So it's four, zero, one. The next minutes are September 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mrs. Monaco?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's five, zero, zero. The next minutes are from September 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
I was not present, so I will abstain.
Okay, and Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so it's four, zero, one. Next minutes are October 11th. We will get through these. October 11th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so it's five, zero, zero. All right. The next meeting is October 25th.
So moved, second.
Oh, I wasn't there. Kyle, why don't you say?
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
I'm an aye, and?
Abstained.
Ms. Monaco is an abstention, so it's four, zero, one. And then, last but not least, is November 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Masardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
And I'm an abstention, so it's four, zero, one. I was not at that meeting. Okay. We got through that. That's a lot of minutes. All right. Next up is any public participation. And I will, if there's anyone who wants to participate, I do alternate between who's remote and who's in the room. And also remind people that you have three minutes. Anybody here to participate publicly? No hands, okay. That was easy. So next item up is Dr. Conti, we have the information and reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we'll start with our student report. So Matthew, we await your sagacious words.
Thank you for awaiting. So the class of 2024 really wanted me to invite the Burlington community to a fundraiser that they are holding tomorrow at True North from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It's really just to engage with the Burlington community, especially with folks who are working and also students who are going to be going before the Common Planning Day that we have at the high school. Currently, DECA is holding their mock district competition, which is why I'm so dressed up, I'm helping out. And we're getting prepared for the district competition that's going to be held next week. But some students were having discrepancies with funding and finances that they were looking forward to get more cleared up, especially for like lower and in lower-class students who really wanted to participate. Otherwise, the Model UN Conference that was held at UMass Lowell a few weeks ago was a success for Burlington High School students. We had a lot of winners. We had, I think, two best delegates, which was really impressive, especially for such a large committee. And then, once again, the DEI inclusion has been a large focus at Burlington High School recently. I have met with a few individuals, both administrators and other students, about the issues, and a major point from the students is that they're looking for more outlets throughout the school community to express, more outlets throughout the school community to express discrepancies and other points of inquiry. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you for that detailed report. Really appreciate it. Okay, and next item up is the Eagle Scout Award. And, if you don't mind, Dr. Conti, I'm going to go ahead. Do you want to say something first, or do you want me to go?
Nope.
Okay, sounds good. So we have this award, and it's going to go to Henry Moran. And first, I wanted to say a little something, and you can come up and I'll hand it over to you, and we'll go from there. So on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to congratulate Henry Moran for achieving rank of Eagle Scout. Becoming an Eagle Scout is an accomplishment that will aid you in all future endeavors, and it is something you can always look back on with pride. Henry finished his Eagle Scout project in collaboration with the Science Center. His project was blazing two nature trails across from Francis Wyman Elementary School. We've invited Ms. Pavlicek to elaborate more on the project. The school board encourages you to remember, encourages you to remember the values you have learned in becoming Eagle Scouts, since it will help you succeed in life. I, along with the entire school board, attend, extend best wishes to you and for your continued success throughout your life. Ms. Pavlicek, would you like to come up and do your presentation on the project?
Sure, and I did just email it to people that they wanted to follow on their own time and looking at.
And while you're getting ready, Henry, come up. Hand it to you. We're going to take a photo at some point, I hope, of?
Absolutely.
I'm dying to know where the trails are at Francis Wyman. It's so awesome.
It's a secret.
I guess.
At the Science Center, we have lots of students who come to us for many different reasons, and we often get contacted from Eagle Scouts or Scouts that need to do a project. And over the years, oh, sorry. There we go, sorry. Many students come to the Science Center looking for many different things, and a lot of Scouts come to us looking for projects. So over the years, I've kept a tally of things that I thought would be great opportunities for Scouts to do their project, and I've also emailed all the principals at the schools for any ideas that they have had. And Henry came to us, and as part of the science curriculum and just science in general, getting students outdoor in nature is very important. I've written into our kindergarten curriculum, and I wonder, I notice nature walk. And out of all the elementary schools, there are some that have conservation or nature walks right on their property, and there are a couple that don't. I still make do with whatever is there on the school property for our programs in our classrooms. But at Francis Wyman, there are no specific nature trails. So one of the things I had in mind was to blaze some trails across the street from Francis Wyman, where there is some town land that backs up to the water resource, where half of the town currently gets their water, and that we also teach the students when they're in second grade. So when Henry came to us, I kind of, we walked over with the principal, Ms. McDonald, and we decided to have two nature trails right across the street from Francis Wyman School. So if you exit the kind of center driveway, right across the street is a small paved path that goes down towards an old plant and facilities building for the waterway back there. And to the right and kind of in the back, there's some great wooded spots that back up to the wetland and the marsh, and we thought this would be a great spot. So Henry's project, as you see, involved clearing, cleaning, and debris and trash removal of this area. And he got some parent and student volunteers and raised whatever funds were needed for the clearing of these trails. And he also got some trail markers. We decided on the two trails would be the yellow trail and the blue trail, which represents the colors of Francis Wyman School. And then here are some photos from our kindergarten nature walks. As kindergartners, we try to teach them what the basic skills of a scientist are, which is asking questions and also observations. So we call it, I notice, I wonder walks. So it starts with trail introductions and safety in nature. So there's me with one of the kindergarten classes and pointing out Henry's trail signs that he put up. We also talk about the water resource as in town and how it gets to their houses and their schools. We also talk about local plant and wildlife. So there are some cattails there, and we talk about those plants with the kindergartners. We actually found a whole bunch of turkey feathers, and the students were really excited about that. And another class, we found some squirrel digs, which might simply just look like little holes in the ground, but they're not so quite. Moss, there are these really old kind of pipes that are back there, concrete, like culvert pipes. And Henry thought it would be a great place for students to sit and explore and kind of have nature's classroom outside. So he really cleaned that spot and that area up really nice, and we have the students touch the moss, and they kind of love seeing it. And then, of course, there's nothing more exciting and interesting than some scat or animal poop. And we did find some fox poop one day on one of our walks, and the kids were so excited to talk about that. One of my highlights of these walks was we actually found a funnel weaver spider web. And it's this really cool giant spider web, and in the center is this hole, which looks like a funnel, and just very exciting. We did not see who was home, he's probably hiding inside. But you can see me pointing it out there to the students. And then one of the other highlights is a lot of people don't realize that here in Burlington and Massachusetts Forest, we have wintergreen mint that grows. And we taught the kids how to identify it, and they all got to pick it and break it open and smell it, and it's always a big highlight to them. And, you know, we tell them not to eat it, and safety first, but it's always an exciting part for students. And then this is from Mrs. Guanci's kindergarten class. So she did a little post on her website, which kind of introduced it to the parents. It says, "Ask your child to tell you about the cool things we found along the way. Ferns, moss, goldenrod, scat, feathers, trees, mushrooms, a swamp, and more." So here's some other examples. The students, at the end of the walk, there are these ferns that are taller than the kids, and they just think that's amazing, you know, that they're these giant plants. Those are actual pictures of type of mushroom and coral mushroom that some of the teachers took photos of. So these photos came straight from the teachers, I asked them to share their experiences. And this is actually great, a second-grade teacher, Mrs. McDonald at Francis Wyman, took her students out on the nature trails today. And not only did they explore the trails, but on the next slide, you'll see that they also worked to make accurate maps of the trails. So in second grade, they learn mapping and how to make a map and the legends and how to connect the pictures with what's going on in the land. So I was super excited to see that the learning was extended beyond what I was doing, just from teachers' visiting. And this is Mrs. Casey's fifth-grade class, exploring those culverts and standing on top of them and just exploring out in the forest. And then here are the third-grade students, and you can see them kind of exploring. And I love the photo with all the kids with their hands up in the air and having a good time, so. And then Mrs. McDonald and I had a great idea, or I forget, was it your idea? I forget. Someone had an idea, Henry?
I don't think it was my idea. I think it came from, so I think Mrs. McDonald, are you?
Yeah, probably combined together. We thought, wouldn't it be a great idea? I always run contests, name the alligator contest and challenges and growing challenges. And I thought, how else can we kind of connect the kids to the trails besides just sending, you know, a teacher email out like, hey, here's this, you know, great student, he did these trails? So we decided to do a trail naming contest. And the students, we encouraged them to go out and explore these trails, check them out. And I got Mrs. McDonald to be on board, and we filmed one of our videos. If you haven't seen our Science Center videos over the year, they're quite quirky and fun. But if you don't mind, we'll play the little video that Mrs. McDonald and I and Mr. Musselman was filming to introduce the trails and the naming contest to the students in the school. Hi, Ms. P, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Great.
What are you doing out here?
I am soaking up this amazing outdoor classroom, nature all around us, enjoying the fresh air, the trees, all the things that you see out here. I really wish that we had someplace that we could use to go explore in nature.
Wow, now that you actually say that, I have an idea.
You do?
Yes. Henry Moran is an Eagle Scout who went to your school when he was in elementary school.
I remember Henry.
And he came to me, and he actually did his Eagle Scout project this year. And he went across the street from your school, and he made two nature trails that are available.
They're available for you students, teachers, to enjoy and explore nature.
That is amazing.
Would you like to go check it out?
Love to go check it out.
Right, I'll have to be really, really careful to stop and wait for a teacher. So here we've arrived at the entrance of the Francis Wyman Forest Nature Trails. We're going to head this way and check it out. So, Ms. P, what kinds of things might the students be looking for when they're out here? Well, we could look at different plant species and look for signs of animals that might have been here, or just explore the habitat outside. A great place, too, just to exercise, keep moving, and to relax your mind and your thoughts. These trails are great, they're clear, they're open, so students have lots of space to walk in. Henry and his volunteers did a great job.
That's amazing.
Hey, you know what? I don't think that these trails have a name, but if you look over here, they do have little markers. There's?
See that?
Yeah, there's a yellow arrow with a marker telling you which direction to walk. And on this tree, there's actually a blue marker. So I think there's two different trails.
Two marked trails, do they have names?
They don't. It's a good idea, since it's the Francis Wyman Forest, that Francis Wyman kids get a chance to name the trail.
Like a naming challenge.
That's amazing.
Oh, it's awesome. So a contest, where all the students get a chance. Yes. And they can come up with two different trail names.
Absolutely.
Two names. And then I could have the sign guys at the high school make little official signs. We can hang them by the arrows marking those trails.
I think that's an amazing idea.
That's great. Be sure to go across the street and check out the nature trails. We will be sending a Google form to you and your classroom, and you'll be able to fill out that form and name both the yellow and the blue trail. These forms will be due by October 15th, and then we will pick the names of the trails and announce the winners. So be sure to go out and check out those trails before October 15th. In exploring the nature trails, I'm so happy for taking me out here to the Francis Wyman Forest. I am so excited that our teachers and students are going to get a chance to come out here and explore, go for a walk, enjoy the great outdoors, and have the opportunity to name our new trails.
I agree. And we're just going to go back to the presentation. That was the next slide, right? Yep. So here we have the trail name winners. The names of the trails were the Falcon's Forest Trail, because their mascot is the falcon, and the Golden Eagle Trail, and two students, actually, from different grade levels, both had picked those names. And Henry was able to join the ceremony. And here are the little signs that Chris Lanny up here at the high school made for us. So thank you, Chris, for doing that. And then Henry got to go to Francis Wyman to give those certificates to the students for the trail naming, and he got to visit some of his teachers. So here's just some pictures that we caught of him visiting his elementary school, and we got him to see his teachers, and he went around, I was so proud of him. He went around and made contact with everyone. It was really great and really heartful to see. And then here are some photos that Henry shared of us, of his Eagle Scout Corn of Honor. And the last one is of the group there. And the last slide, we just wanted to say thank you so much on behalf of the Burlington Science Center, Francis Wyman, and Burlington Public Schools, and thank you for all your hard work and dedication. And this is something that will just continue and continue now on forever. So thank you so much. And I also wanted to thank John Sanchez, who I believe just retired, because he's the one who gave us permission to do so on the land, because technically, it's, I think, the, it's either the water department's or someone's land. So, yeah, so thank you so much, Henry, and thanks, everyone, for letting me share that experience.
Well, I just want to say thank you for that amazing presentation.
I was going to say, I think-
I was gonna say, I think that's the most entertained I've been at a school committee meeting yet. So thank you to you for that. And Henry, you should be very proud. I mean, to get that all coordinated, I mean, like she said, it took the whole community for you to get approval to build that, since it wasn't part of the school property. And the support you got from, you know, the whole town and the school, from Mrs. Pavlicek for the whole project and leading you through that. And I'm sure whoever your scout leader was probably also had some input to help you through everything. So again, so proud of you and what a wonderful project.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I suggest it would be if you just move your chairs a little bit and just stand right in front of the public side. Henry and we snap a couple shots. That would be great. So, Ms. Masardo, I apologize.
Everybody in here? Can you get us all or can some of us sit?
Nope.
Here we go.
Perfect.
Sorry. Cheese. Dogs, cats. We should've said scat. That would've made everyone laugh.
Right, scat.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And thank you Wendy, too.
Now we can say scat.
I know, one, two, three, scat. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Henry. And congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Moore.
And, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Simon.
I, congratulations to all of the people who helped and thank you, Henry. And I also wanted to congratulate Henry for making districts playing the clarinet, which I understand is maybe a first for Burlington, but it's certainly been a long time since a clarinet has made districts. So you're a multi-talented young man and we're really proud of you and wish you the best. And thank you for contributing this wonderful project to our town.
Madam Chair, just because Ms. Simon brought it up, under announcements, I was going to do that. But, Henry, since you're here, I just wanted to, I believe I forwarded this to the committee, but just wanted to congratulate the senior district festival band students. And again, as Ms. Simon mentioned, clarinet, there was Henry Moran and Catherine Campbell. Alto saxophone was Mike Waddilla. Bass clarinet was Adi Dash. Trumpet, Amanda Barati. French horn, Nathaniel Chow. Viola, Chloe Covumby. Sopranos, Sienna Silva, Emerson Weisner. Alto's, Julia Boldesar and Julia Schwartzman. Tenors, Henry Estes, Conlon Lyons and Desire Oteba. And the basses, Nate Carey, Christian Kattende and Stephen Noonan. And so those are for the senior district. And then for the all-state festival, we had Julia Boldesar, Nathaniel Chow, Adi Dash, Henry Estes, Henry Moran, again, so made all-states, Stephen Noonan, Oteba Desire, Sienna Silva, Emerson Weisner and Mike Waddilla. And so, again, wanna extend our thanks to their teachers, Julie Weller and Sean Bucksmann, for coaching them. Obviously, there's a lot of practice on their own that goes into that. But we had quite a few students qualify for both senior district and all-state. And so, in addition to having Henry blazing trails, he's also auditioning and being recognized for his talent on the clarinet. So, Henry, congratulations.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and go on to the subcommittee reports. Anything you'd like to report, Ms. Simon? Mr. Foss? You're good. Ms. Masardo, anything you'd like to report? All right. And, yep. Sorry, Ms. Masardo?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, okay. And I guess I have nothing to report either. So we'll go ahead and move on to Ways and Means. Steve Moran?
I think from now on, we should call him Henry's father.
That would be better, thanks. This is our usual time of the year where the committee is idle, so I don't have any updates. December and January coming up, where the town will start its annual planning process. So I'll have updates going forward, most likely.
Thank you, Henry's father.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Mr. Moran? Oh, okay. I was just thinking about this this afternoon. It's the beginning of our budget season for the school department. And when we get to town meeting in May, we present our budget as a bottom line. And I wanted to just remind you, everyone on town meeting, that our budget process is open to the public through our school committee meetings. We will have a public hearing on it at some point. So if people have particular interests that, on particular items, that that's the time when, that would be a time for people to listen and ask questions and have input.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As usual, I expect that the school committee will go through the process of seeing all the requests come in from each of the departments and talk about it on the school committee floor. So I'll make sure that all the committee members are aware that that happens and they can either catch it live or catch it on BCAT.
Thank you. And any other announcements from anyone?
Madam Chair, just two quick announcements, just to, again, I think positive news, celebrations. So I was notified essentially last week that, I'll just read it. We are pleased to notify you that the Burlington High School has been awarded an Innovation Pathways Fiscal '23 Implementation and Support Grant of $49,550. Again, we want to thank you for your commitment to helping students develop knowledge and skills related to careers within high-demand industries while in high school. Through this funding and your continued support, we hope to expand access to great educational opportunities in the Commonwealth. And then we'll get further instructions on the money in the letter signed by Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito. Want to recognize Shereen Terrell, who you've all met in terms of our high school computer science teacher. And she has put in a lot of effort to continue to write these Competitive Innovation Pathways grants. And again, was very pleased with another notification. So again, from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito. Again, congratulations. We are pleased to notify you that Burlington has been awarded a Fiscal Year '23 Fund Code 311 Supporting Students Social, Emotional Learning, Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness Through Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports grant. That's the state's name. In the amount of $65,000. Again, we want to thank you for your commitment to supporting the social, emotional and behavioral health needs of students, families and educators. Through this funding and your continued support, we hope to expand access to great educational opportunities in the Commonwealth. And again, the $65,000 was largely the result of Christine Concepcion, our Director of Mental Health, who applied for the grant and did all the work ensuring that we would receive this money. My understanding is a part of the grant is to partner with the Burlington Youth and Families to partially support a bilingual counselor. So again, we're trying to get creative ways to expand counseling opportunities for the students who are in our, who are in our charge. So again, thank you to Ms. Concepcion and to Ms. Terrell for their efforts. And while we are well-supported by the community, I think grant opportunities are a great way to show that we are trying, Mr. Moran, to seek out other funds and that it really helps us to innovate and expand some of our offerings. So again, thank you to those two.
Congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Next items are learning equity and thriving. Dr. Conti?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, this is a discussion item, not looking for a vote yet. We have some important positions to fill. I think one of them, certainly in the front of my mind, is an Assistant Superintendent position with Mr. Larkin resigning from the district at the end of June. And so it's been a while since we've looked for an Assistant Superintendent. And the postings need to be updated. So we are working on a draft job description that I wanted to share with the committee to get feedback on. Shared this with my staff. We want to share it with principals, just to make sure that people look at the job description. We're also asking other districts that have hired Assistant Superintendents more recently to share their job descriptions. It's not a make or break. I don't think we have to argue over every word. I think people in general know what it is. But I just want to make sure that our job description is aligned with the three-year plan that you all approved and that we're highlighting some of the, we're emphasizing, I should say, some of the areas of work that you all believe we need to do that. I think by doing so, we can help refine the questions and try to find a match with someone in those job descriptions. So again, I just, it really meant to be discussion. And what I'm hoping is really to get the job posted in the next two weeks prior to the winter break. And then people who will be applying will have part of that winter break, if they're so inclined. And then put together some committees, including some community members, really towards the middle of January and February, and hoping to have the position hired sometime in March. But again, don't want to rush. I want to make sure we have a great pool and want to make sure that, again, that you all are aware of the process and what's going on. And again, if you want to participate, you are certainly more than welcome. My suggestion, though, is there'll be other opportunities other than sort of the first round. And so my suggestion would be, if we have a smaller group of finalists, that we can arrange a time for you to meet the finalists. I think Assistant Superintendent, similar to Special Education Director and similar to Business Manager, I think that you have to approve the hire. You don't necessarily make the hire. But I think you have to, I think you have to actually, I can still hire the person if you don't approve, but I do think you, I think the way the regulation reads is you do get to weigh in on the Assistant Superintendent. So I will check the regulations, Mrs. Monaco, to make sure. But we'll move forward. So here's your, here's your draft job description. Again, please remember, it is a draft. It's a work in progress. I will send you an electronic copy as well, if you want to, if you want to weigh in. And Ms. Masardo, I'll make sure I get you an electronic copy, too. But I just wanted to make sure you're updated on the timeline. And we could use the support and the help. So that was the, that was that agenda item. I'll certainly answer.
I have questions.
Answer any questions?
Ms. Monaco has questions.
So obviously, I haven't read it. I just glanced at it. I just wanted to express my concern that we emphasize curriculum. I think the curriculum has, it needs some work. It has been not really kept up to where I'd like to see it the past year or two. So I would like to see a real heavy emphasis on someone who not only knows, but loves curriculum work. And there are not many people who love curriculum work. So that could be a challenge. And then I have a question. Usually what you say is that everybody has a job and that you can't really hire the best people until close to the end of the school year, starting in the next school year. And so why are you talking about March?
It may not be March, but I just wanted to, I think if we have someone who's interested and they know they're going to be ending a contract, then I think it would be respectful of that person to give their district that they may be leaving enough time to find a replacement. So again, March, April, I'm not, I just don't think we can necessarily wait till the very end. I wouldn't post before this time. My initial resistance to posting the job was when we were discussing the DEI position. I think posting in October, November is too early. So I think posting now makes sense. I think that'll give people quality time to fill out the application. And then scheduling interviews is challenging. So again, I don't want to feel rushed and I want to make sure we have enough time for several finalists to meet a lot of constituents, because they're gonna be certainly working with teachers. They're gonna be working with principals. I'd like the central office staff to meet them. I'd like for you all to have a chance to speak with them. So it's gonna take us a while, Ms. Monaco, so.
What would you expect the start date to be?
For this person?
Yeah.
July 1?
Okay.
Is what my expectation?
All right, that sort of answers my question. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, still want to read through it.
And just to Mrs. Monaco's point, I think the first bullet you'll see is curriculum. So I think while not often the case, we are of like mind in terms of.
Eric, how dare you say we don't always agree?
All right. Are we ready for the next item? Policy review update?
Again, I just don't want this to fall off the, fall off your attention. I asked Mary Ann to contact Dorothy Presser at MASC, which she did. Dorothy responded. I just wanted to make sure there was nothing from the district that she needed. She responded that she had all of the information she needed from Burlington and they were in the process of a policy review. So it takes a while. I just wanted to update the committee that it is something that is on our front burner in terms of working with MASC. They are doing this work for many districts across the Commonwealth, so they have a large volume. I think they've added some staff. But they have all the information that we discussed at the start of the year. They have all of our existing policies. And the intention, again, is for MASC to make suggestions for our current policies that we have and make suggestions for, to fill in gaps where they see that we believe we need new policies. And then my suggestion, once we get to that point, would be to start with the MASC suggested language, so we have a complete policy manual. And then we can make adjustments to that complete policy manual instead of, don't let perfect be the enemy of good or a complete policy manual, is sort of my intention. But I just wanted to tell you that we are on top of it and that we're not, we are not doing the work technically other than getting them the information that they need to provide a recommendation to this committee.
Thank you. Ms. Simon, question?
On, my question isn't that crucial in the sense that when it's done, it will be done. But I'm wondering if you, if they've given you an indication that this is something that we'll hear back from them in January or in June? And my interest is because I've been working on this for many years and I am eager for it to move forward. And I'm, it is moving forward. But if you had any indication from them, I would appreciate knowing what it is.
Ms. Simon, they did estimate four to five months when we started this process. So our objective was to get them our policies as quickly as possible, which we did. I'm not telling you this now because we just got them the policies. They've had the policies probably for several months. But I just didn't want you to think that we weren't chasing this down or continuing to communicate with MASC about the policy work that you all tasked us with.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. The next item is food service management update?
Again, I just want to go through the timeline and make sure that you're all aware of the timeline and because there were some obviously strong feelings about this. So again, Nicole has been working on the procurement aspect of this, which there is one. So would you mind spending some time just going through sort of the timeline and what's to expect? And then about using this year as sort of a trial and then moving forward. And then if it's the school committee's intention to be involved in this procurement, then we're going to need to schedule some time to go through the proposals. So again, I just want to make sure we're all moving in the same, in the same direction. So Nicole?
Sure. So we are required to issue a request for proposals for this. And I'm currently finishing up that advertisement. We're required to post the advertisement for two weeks minimum. And then once we have our proposals in, we can decide who's going to be the evaluators and move forward with that process. So there's a non-price proposal and a price proposal portion to this, similar to, I think, a couple of others that some of you may have been involved in in the past. And then we can move to award a contract once all the evaluations are complete and a determination's made. And I think that we will be able to award someone within time so that we don't go without someone in that position.
But certainly we'll be mindful that if we do need some sort of interim leadership, we can do that. I think the proposals will require them to submit some, a transition plan and.
Some meal plans.
And some meal plans. So it shouldn't be sort of someone coming in without any experience in this endeavor. And then we'll, we'll look to see at the proposals. Now, I think we have to ask, if there's no proposal, that's acceptable. Then there's no proposal that's acceptable and we can sort of do another, move in another direction. But I think it's, I think we just need to see what's out there. Mrs. Monaco, you expressed some, the problems with the issues in the past and maybe they haven't changed. And if that's the case, then we will sort of, for us to post and hire someone is much easier for us than to go out through the procurement, follow the procurement process. So we're sort of, we hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll have proposals for you all to see. Again, I'm assuming you all want to see them. That's, but I sort of want the committee to tell us explicitly that that is the case. And then if that's the case, then we will make sure that you get them. So that's sort of, you're not involved in every procurement, but if this is one that's important, I just want to make sure we're, we're doing what you want.
And also, I know that there were some reservations about moving forward with a food service management company. So the way that this is going to be written is that it would be through the end of the year with options to renew. So we could evaluate at the end of the year and decide if we wanted to continue to move forward.
Okay. I know there's at least one comment to my left, so.
It's not a comment.
Ms. Monaco, or question?
Yes. So, yes, I want to be involved. Yes, I appreciate the, writing it with an option to renew. And this, I'll just read you some thoughts that I have, that I would like answers to, not this minute necessarily, but when you know the answers. So what we talked about was keeping all of our employees and yet hiring a food service company. And so I would like to know, in addition to what we're already paying all of our employees, what the cost will be. I want to know what this food service company does. Do they do you shopping and give you all the food and our workers cook it? Is it all pre-cooked? Is it bags of chicken nuggets and bags of potato puffs that our cafeteria workers separate and make meals out of? Is it, is it airplane food where it's a meal already prepackaged, an individual meal? And if it is individual meals, what's it packaged in? Is it packaged in plastic? Does it have cellophane on it? Just as an aside, I'll tell you that if you went into my kitchen, you could not find a plastic item. I'm very averse to plastic. And I don't want my kids eating out of plastic containers. So that's one of my concerns. We, if it, if we are going forward with it, I would like to have input from the cafeteria workers publicly. I would like to have tasting of what these meals are because we've done that in the past and that was the end of the process because nobody liked it. I'd like to know how many companies might be looking to do this, like, you know, are we looking at one company, a 15 companies, or three, or? And I also would like to make the point that unless I have bad information, which is always possible, my understanding is that there is someone who is willing to take on the work of the current manager. So there really shouldn't be a problem with her retirement and needing to do this like in the first minute. Am I correct or is that, am I not correct?
I, I'm sure there is. We would need to post and get some applicants in. Again, I do think we could fulfill a food service director. And our looking for a management company is not a criticism of the management or what's been happening. I just think anytime there's a retirement, there's an opportunity and we're going to see what's out there. You will know how many companies apply, especially if you are going to be part of the group that rates them because you'll see all their proposals. So we'll look at that. Unless there's someone who's unqualified or doesn't complete the proposal, you'll see them all. And I would sort of look at other, you know, I wait to see what they can deliver. I'll be very skeptical going in, but, but I think it's an opportunity and I think we should look. So.
I don't have a problem with looking, but I have a problem with all of the things that I just mentioned. I'm, you know, sometimes people give me sort of a hard time for being as experienced as I am on this committee. And there are some benefits.
Yeah.
I've been involved a long time and I know what the cafeteria food was like in the late 70s and in the 80s and in the 90s. And it used to be cooked, you know, as, I don't, I don't know what the current contract says. Bobby might know, but do we still have cooks and cooks helpers? Yeah, it's all part of the contract language. So what are they cooking? You know, frozen meals or, I just, I have a real problem with all of this and you clearly know that by now. So all the things that I said, what does the food look like? Are they just doing the shopping for us and our people cook it? Or is this all prepackaged, pre-planned? You know, I want all those answers before we move ahead. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would also add having students taste it because they're the ones who have to eat it.
Yeah.
I know mine came home complaining a lot. Ms. Masardo, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I am super in favor of exploring this option. I met with two of these companies at the school committee conference in early November. I would love to be involved in, Mrs. Monaco, I can answer probably all of your questions. They, both companies that I spoke with and both had seen our RFP and were very excited about it, offer the full range. So they can just, most of, they were both committed to keeping our employees. They can do most, I think most, the most common method is they plan the menus, which I think would be a huge help in this town, is some more diverse menus. They plan the menus, they can do the ordering and then leave it to your staff to do the cooking and distributing. Or I do think they do the option of what you call the airplane food, but I don't think you're required to go with that option. But both of them integrate into curriculum so they can work with nutritional lesson plans, science plans, whole, you know, events, holidays, things like that. One was showcasing, I think they called it, I forget what they called it. I have all the pamphlets at home, like a cook-off. So the kids would be involved in like, let's say, a burrito versus an empanada and the kids would help look, see the ingredients, cook it, et cetera. And then they would do a taste test and vote. And then that item would be on the menu for the next week or things like that, which really gets the buy-in for the kids to kind of try new things and things like that. And I know we have a very culture diverse town, so we could get more culture diverse things on the menu. I think the, these food service companies also help you with the budget. They balance the budget. I know that it's neutral to us, cost neutral. I spoke with Carrie Purchase at the middle school and she had some experience with some of these at her previous school. And I know Newton, Lexington, Wayland, a lot of surrounding towns, I think, are having a lot of success with these companies. So I really am happy that we're exploring this option.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Ms. Simon?
I wanted to ask sort of a follow-up question from some of Mrs. Monaco's questions. So when we put out the RFP, are we, is there a way, has it already gone out or, okay, is there a way to add, you know, tell us about how you reduce plastic use, for example? And tell us about how you provide healthier food or more diverse menus and those kinds of things. Is that part of, and can it be part of, the?
So we can ask for whatever information we want these companies to provide to us. I do already have some stuff written in there about like what they've done in other districts. And obviously, they provide references for those. So that would be able to verify and check and maybe even do site visits if we wanted.
Right. And particularly, I think there's a lot of, I talk to the same people that Ms. Masardo did. And they're very aware and alert. And I heard them talk about diverse menus and healthy food and local produce and things like that. I didn't hear anyone talk about using less plastic. So maybe it would be, I would like to see the RFP have, include something specific about reduced plastic use. And, you know, if we get nobody who applies with that, then we'll have to look at what we have for applicants. But I think that's something that we could ask for and would like to see.
Thank you. And I was going to add to that, too, as far as the plastic reduction because I know there's a restaurant here in town, Sweet Green, that instead of using the plastic containers for all the salads, it's more of a biodegradable product. It's, you know, I'd rather have them eating out of something like that than the plastics as well. So I think that's important to all of us to put in there. Yes, Ms. Monaco?
What do our students currently eat off? Are they cafeteria dishes with knives and forks and they get washed or?
Plastic. Nope. Everything's plastic.
You're kidding?
Nope. There are no.
They eat off plastic?
They eat off of a styrofoam plate, but they use plastic utensils.
And does all that get recycled?
Well, styrofoam doesn't, our town doesn't take styrofoam.
Well, you asked if all of it does.
Whatever happened to the green dishes and the silverware?
That hasn't been around. I don't think I ever saw it.
Okay.
I don't believe that I've ever seen it.
Well, okay, step number one, I think Martha might agree with this. Let's get rid of the styrofoam.
I agree with it too because there's nowhere to recycle it.
Well.
If we can.
Again, through the chair, I think that that was part of our Black Earth proposal when we were discussing composting, which I think was several meetings ago.
Maybe it was last time.
And so what we are sort of working with this management company, we actually were trying to do this in order. So we'd like to get the proposals first. But I do think Bob has explored a composting proposal. I think we have yet to share that with you in the detail that you wanted. We just talked about doing it. And then, so we're hopefully going to be spending some time in the coming months talking about food service management, menus, and then the increasing the composting and sort of reducing the waste stream coming out of our cafeterias. So I think those will be, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I guess I'm supposed to do a teaser. That's a teaser for the coming months for school committee.
Ms. Monaco?
Bob, don't our cafeterias all have dishwashers?
No.
Our cafeterias have sinks, but not all of our cafeterias have dishwashers.
Which ones don't have dishwashers?
All of them except the two.
Which two have dishwashers?
The newer ones. So it would be the middle school and Memorial. We have, yeah, forms of dishwashers, but even when we, 20 or so years ago, would use like larger plastic trays and so forth, they would still go through a tray drop-off window.
Yeah.
In the side of the cafeteria and then go into large sink basins. So we weren't really using dishwashers back then either for large quantities of materials.
All right. Well, you're not going to like this comment, but I think far more important than a food service company is getting rid of the plastic silverware and styrofoam plates. That's my opinion.
Ms. Simon?
I think waste reduction is an ongoing question that we should be looking at and it spans many different aspects. Some of it's plastic and some of it's food waste and other things. So I'm glad we're having this conversation. And I want to just say that it is a conversation that we'll need to have for the Fox Hill School Building Committee when we build a new school. Maybe we want to consider having dishwashers and dishes in our new building, which would help reduce waste, our waste stream quite a bit. I know it, there are reasons why we got rid of them. Plastic's easy, plastic's cheap, but I think we've learned a lot in the last 20 years about it. So I'm hoping that we'll have that conversation when we talk about the Fox Hill building project as well. But I think this is an, I know this is going to be an ongoing conversation and I'm glad to hear us begin it.
Thank you. Ready to move on?
Yes, because at some point, there'll be a financial aspect to this and the, some of what you're asking for may add cost. And so we'll have to look at that. And it may be that the district and the community wants to spend some money on these things and we need to budget for it a little bit differently. So I think the companies are going to look to have participation increase, which is why they're motivated to make the menus attractive. I think Ms. Masardo mentioned some of the contests they have. That's all to boost participation because that helps lower their margins, I guess. But if we, we can sort of look at a bunch of other options, but it may be that the expectation that our participation sort of funds the entire food service expense may, may not be realistic unless the state decides to continue to support free breakfast and lunch for students and, you know, moving forward. So I just think we need to have more detailed conversations and I think you will, obviously you all want to be part of our procurement, so we have our team in place. We may want to expand it a little bit, but we can maybe expand it to include someone from the cafeteria, maybe a student, or a group of high school students that created a presentation last year, some juniors and seniors about wanting some changes in the menu. So we'll find a group to go through the proposals. And honestly, I think we'll learn a lot. And I think sometimes if you only know what you have, it may be worthwhile for us to see what other, what other districts are doing, look at some other menus and see what's possible. And then to Mr. Moran's question is, and then what the cost is of those, of those options. So.
And actually, one question, and I'll go to you. And I think the other pet peeve of mine is produce because usually it tastes like plastic from what I recall and from comments, again, when my child was in school. So I'm trying to figure out how we get better tasting produce that's either sourced somewhere locally so it's more fresh or it has more taste to it. So I'm just trying to find out where they source that type of thing, too, if that's something we can ask in the process, the bid process. Ms. Monaco?
I want you to take all those styrofoam plates and throw them out. And I want you to get, worst-case scenario, decent paper plates. Anyone who pays attention to the science knows the tiny particles of plastic in oceans, rivers, reservoirs, drinking water are causing cancer. Plastic is not a healthy thing to eat off. And I am shocked that our kids are eating off styrofoam plates. I'm just shocked. And I guess, I don't even know what to say except, please, get rid of the styrofoam. I don't know who orders it. I don't know who makes the decisions, but.
Well, again, Ms. Monaco, I'll certainly take responsibility for that. And so by next meeting, we will have a proposal. I think when we looked at this in the past, the cost, Bob, was about 10 times. So again, I know cost isn't, isn't an issue, but.
I don't care about cost. Mr. Moran will help us pay for the paper plates.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not questioning that we shouldn't do it, but I think we need to look at some hard numbers and sort of what we have. And we can, we can put that together. hard numbers and sort of what we have, and we can put that together for, because we've done it before.
I just want to add that we do also have paper plates, like in some instances, and depending on the foods, and, you know, if it was a salad, it may be in a plastic container. If it was like a hamburger or so forth, it may be in a wrap, like some type of, not foil, but more of like a parchment paper.
So we have no dishes anymore?
We do not have any hard, either ceramic glass type of dishes like that. We don't have plastic hard dishes, no.
Thank you. All right. Are we ready to move on to the district-wide school climate survey?
Yes, Madam Chair, again, this is a informational conversation, and to ask parents who are listening or staff who are listening, as part of our three-year Planning for Success document, we talked about thriving metrics. Hopefully, you remember. Some of the thriving metrics we discussed were to do some school climate survey work. So we have a school climate survey going out. The window is from December 5th through December 22nd. We are asking students from grades four through 12 to participate, and principals and teachers are giving them time to do so. It's about a 10-minute survey. We're asking all staff to participate, and then we're asking for parents to participate. And we would, again, this is an opportunity to reflect on the positive and areas where you think we need to pay some attention to. The survey is anonymous, I just want to stress that again, the survey is anonymous. We will be asking for school-based information, whether you're a student, a staff, or a parent, and we may, we will be asking for some demographic information in terms of gender and other identifications that people want to share in the survey, and that'll give us an opportunity to more granularly look at the information. I want to be straight up in front with the school committee. My intention is not to get the surveys and sort of do a presentation on all of our, on all of the data publicly to the school committee. I think we want to carefully take a look at it, we want to share it with building leaders, we want them to use it with their staff. I think this information is really important, but it's not meant to be a sledgehammer over people's heads, because then people will stop participating. So we all know we have areas we can improve on. I'll certainly share participation rates with the school committee, I can share some general district information. I'll even share some opportunities that we all have for growth. It's not meant to just be a positive either, but again, the intention here is to provide some feedback for principals and for us to look at across the district. Again, we have thriving as one of our areas, and there's no sort of set thriving metric that we have, so we are looking at doing this. And districts very commonly do school climate surveys, so I'd like to see how this goes for us and then make it a regular part of our practice. And then figure out how best to present the data to the committee and publicly in terms of how it is utilized. The state is interested in school climate as well, and they've taken some false starts at it. And I just remember, three or four years ago, Mr. Fosse, you might remember, that they asked students to fill out a school climate survey after an MCAS test. So they could voluntarily do that, so you can imagine the results after sitting for a couple hours, then doing a school climate survey. It was, the timing was sort of interesting. So we're looking to provide, again, a three-week window, we're looking to, if the information is very helpful, probably try to utilize the same window over time. But gathering some of this information, I think, is very important for us in terms of looking at whether all students are thriving in Burlington.
So I have questions. Who came up with the survey questions, and then are we able to get a copy of the survey?
Yes, so I'll make sure we send it out. All parents were sent copies of the process and the survey. It is a commercially available survey, so we aren't developing it, because it needs to be norm-referenced over, you know, over so many participants. So we're using, it's, the survey is actually free, what you pay for is the analysis of the survey. So I will happily share the email that went out with all of the detailed information. And people can opt out. They can opt out, they can opt their children out, so they do not have to, this is not a forced participation, but we're hoping that people do participate.
Thank you. And Ms. Monica, you had a question or comment?
So I had a parent contact me about the survey. In fact, I have an email from her. And she felt that the question, some of the questions, were extremely generic and really not answerable by parents. She thought that the questions needed to be more specific in order to be meaningful, and I know this is an hour survey, but it might be a reason that maybe we could develop our own survey. So here, a couple of examples. One of the questions, "All students are treated failure at my student's school." And as a parent, she said, "How do I know?" And it says, "Teachers at my student's school treat all students with respect." And again, it's like, "How do I know?" And the classroom, the students keep their classroom neat. I haven't seen the classrooms, how can I tell you that? And then it was about volunteering on special projects, and she thought that maybe special projects could be communicated more so that parents knew they could work on them, that maybe they don't volunteer because they don't know about them. So the point, the ultimate point that I took was that this particular survey, and this is a parent of, she really cares, I'll put it that way. And she just felt that the survey really wasn't useful as it is, and that maybe we should have our own.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Okay, so we can move on to facilities and finance. Dr. Conti? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, the BHS renovation committee, sorry, one more.
Again, this is a standing agenda item. I think that since our last meeting, Nicole did meet with Doran Whittier. We had talked about what their thinking was, and we were attempting to, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with Paul Sargarino and John D'Nizio, but we can give you some feedback, or Nicole, we can give some feedback on that, on the meeting with Doran Whittier. It doesn't appear to be as easy as expanding their scope of services as I was hoping. So again, I would say, I think, but it is important feedback, so.
So we approached them to sort of put a proposal together to help us prioritize and organize renovation efforts here, and they came back and said that they thought that it would be more worthwhile for us to do a full feasibility instead of a pre-feasibility.
Makes sense.
And that the difference in costs right now between like renovations and contingencies for unknowns and new builds really aren't incredibly far off in that...
New high school?
Well, I think that's why they want to do the full feasibility, is they're saying if they can make it work on the site, if they can make it work on the site, then they may, in fact, have us change our statement of interest to a new high school instead of a renovation. Again, and they may be able to keep some of the features of this building, like the auditorium and the gymnasiums, because they've been well-maintained, but maybe tear down sections at a time. And again, I'm way out of my area, but I think that what we thought would be, again, a, I guess, a pre-feasibility or a partial feasibility to help guide the conversations that I think this committee wants to have, because as interested as we all are, we don't, I don't have the expertise to guide the decision-making. And I think people think highly of this firm, because we've gone through our procurement process, and so, again, I think they're telling us, they would recommend doing a full feasibility, which, again, if it looks like our feasibility before, I'm looking at you two, we're, what, $1.5 million? And so it's not inexpensive, but I also think I don't want to throw good money after bad, and if they believe that this building needs to be replaced, and that's the most cost-effective way of doing that, I think that's information that we should have, and information that I don't have the expertise to direct you to do. So I'm not saying it has to be Doran Whittier. If we do a full feasibility, we would need to go through a procurement process similar to what we did for, through the MSBA, but it doesn't look like their recommendation is to do it as a sort of a partial, put a partial effort into this process.
It's about time somebody figured that out.
Ms. Simon?
I'm very intrigued by this, and it makes me wonder if the MSBA would then support the project, et cetera. So I was wondering, you probably don't know the answer, but if you could, either Mr. Kuna or Dr. Conti, find out, or Ms. Kasha, if we were to go ahead with a full feasibility without MSBA and put in a statement of interest for our next one, for the high school, for a new building, would MSBA allow us to use that, or would we start from scratch again? Questions like that. Also, darn, there was another piece of that. I'll think of it, I guess.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Monica?
You mentioned a meeting with Town Hall?
Yes.
And obviously, doing anything is going to cost money.
Yes.
And I don't know if you will like this suggestion or not, I can go either way with it, but as part of the subcommittee with the selectmen, if it's possible to include, I think Catherine's the other member, maybe you would like to include us in that meeting.
Again, you're always welcome. Honestly, we just wanted to have this conversation. I was hoping to have the conversation before having it publicly, but we are sort of under a time constraint, and...
I mean with the select...
No, I certainly understand that, and, because we were talking about this, could potentially be a May warrant article.
Right.
And it might be that we do very little else other than this, depending on sort of what the town sets for guidelines. But I also think the feedback from Town Meeting is, you know, there's no little project at the high school, so if we're spending $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 on a project, it doesn't take us very long to get to a full feasibility. And I certainly think the feedback, while supportive from Town Meeting, is they'd just like to see a plan. And if we have a feasibility where they say replacement, or a new building, or sort of, like I said, a partial replacement of this building, maybe a new academic building is the most cost-effective way for us to go, then I think we, I think then, it may take us 10 years, but I'm saying, I think then that's important information for us to have, especially if it's going to be longer-lasting. And what they were really concerned about are the contingencies in a building that's 40-something years old. You don't know what you're going to find once you start renovating, and so the costs go up, you know, very quickly. So something like, what, $450 a square foot for renovation, and they said $550 or $600 for something for potentially new. Of course, that changes, and with COVID, everything, so I hate even to put numbers out there. But it's not, there's not a huge difference. There would be some, but I'm saying, if the building then lasts 50 years, then I think then that's the better deal for the town.
Is the plan to meet with the town to talk about funding for the study?
The plan is, first of all, to start our operating budget conversation, and then to talk about what they're thinking of in terms of warrants, and then we would look at the warrants that we haven't completed yet, or even started yet, and maybe, again, what I'm envisioning is getting a list to the committee if we have, again, if we're estimating another $1.5 million, but we can delay several projects that, you know, save us whatever, then maybe we only need $1.1 million. I just want to give you those details, I don't have it. I initially thought, again, we could do sort of, for much less money, a sort of a 10-year renovation plan, but they weren't recommending renovation.
Is this all part of the guidelines meeting that usually we have, like, right about now?
This was going to be a separate conversation, really, about warrants, and I think that the debt schedule doesn't necessarily have a new high school on it. But if they're saying we're going to save money over the next 10 years, then I, honestly, we need more information, so I don't know exactly what to recommend. And I know I'm sitting here saying, I don't know.
When's the guideline meeting?
We have yet to hear, but that'll be coming up in the next, I'm sure, in the next few weeks, yeah, next month.
And you'll be sure that the subcommittee is invited to?
Yeah, absolutely, that subcommittee will be invited.
Ms. Simon? Yeah, I wanted to follow up what I couldn't remember earlier, that I was, another question for MSBA or for this process would be, we did get some money from Town Meeting two years in a row to do what we called an HVAC feasibility study, and we got the numbers that we came out with last spring, which was that it would cost about $80 million to do just the HVAC system and the ADA upgrades and things that would be triggered. So would that, those feasibility numbers and plans and reports, information, I'm sorry, would that information be able to be used in a new, full feasibility study? Again, that's a question for Doran Whittier or for MSBA. We may not know the answer. And then the other part is that I'm very aware with the Fox Hill project that MSBA requires, when you have a project, that you look at renovation or addition or new building. Even though I'm convinced that Fox Hill, the building, should not exist anymore when we have the new one, the architects and engineers and OPMs are looking at the project, saying, should we recommend that we renovate this building, should we recommend that we add to it, or should we recommend that we replace it with a new building? So if the high, the high school would have to go through that process anyway, so that's another piece to put in the thoughts about this. I think, so I'm very actually encouraged, it feels like a way forward, is what I'm saying.
It does.
Yeah, it does, absolutely, yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments on that?
So again, this was meant to be informational, and I think we could certainly form a building committee, but I think it makes sense for us to, if we are sort of moving forward with a full feasibility, then, which would be my recommendation at this point, then I think we need to have some financial conversations. And then, Ms. Simon, we will certainly talk to MSBA, but our intention is to follow their process closely, even if they're not a partner, so that eventually, if they do partner with us, they could do that. I was with, I was at Shawshank today, they're awaiting their statement of interest, which they'll hear about in the coming weeks. I think Lexington is also now in the grant cycle, so we'll, again, there are high schools, Bill Rick is new, Wilmington's new, Tewksbury's new. So there's Stonem, you're right, is new. Winchester was renovated in my time here. So Arlington is new. So I think they're looking at those '70s structures, again, Shawshank, I think, was probably open, it looks like almost they share some architectural panache.
Is that what you call it?
Sorry. So, but I think if they, anyway, so I do think we need to have conversations, because there's no small projects and there's no small expense. And, Ms. Simon, you're right, we get to the tens of millions of dollars very... And Ms. Simon, you're right, we get to the tens of millions of dollars very quickly, and I'm uncomfortable making that recommendation without some real experts telling me that's the right way to go, not only for the short term, but for the 10 to 50, the next sort of lifespan of this, of this facility. So I think that's the, that's kind of where my thinking is now, and having to be one of the people who answers those questions, I'm just not comfortable answering those questions.
Ms. Simon?
So this agenda item was listed as the BHS renovation committee, and I've been pushing really hard for us to create it. Given this conversation, I'm willing to put that on hold and put it on the back burner.
I agree.
I think there, as long as, I think it's important that we continue to have these conversations, as I hear you're going to go ahead and look into these things and talk to the town, and talk to people like Doran Whittier, and figure out how we can move forward. At this stage, I'm certainly willing to put the idea of a building committee on the back burner, as long as we continue to have these conversations.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. I was going to actually make the same suggestion you just did, so thank you for proposing that, and I'm of full agreement as well. And I think we've got buy-in from everybody, too, so. Any more comments? Okay. So now we can go ahead and move on to facilities and finance. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it over to Nicole, it's our monthly financial update. And again, you're very familiar with the format at this point?
So all of our revolving accounts are in good standing, and currently no issues or concerns with operating or accommodated.
All good?
Looked good.
Just, just one point of information is the, I believe it was discussed at the joint conference, but the, the state sets the out-of-district tuition rates for students who are educated outside of the district in those programs. Those schools have been lobbying the state to say that they can't find staff, and they can't hire folks, and they feel like their salaries have been suppressed, and the cost of their programs aren't meeting their expenses. So the state is, the state is proposing, Nicole, at this point, a 14% increase to OSD, which are out-of-school district tuition rates.
14%?
14%, and so that would make our accommodated account obviously increase somewhat. Now, Circuit Breaker would respond to that increase, but it takes them a year to, a year to respond, so-
And it's subject to appropriation.
And it's subject to appropriation. So is that final, is that final approval now from the state? I know there's a lot of arguing going on. I know the superintendent's association was saying, can they phase it in over three years? Is there a way that we can help them? And again, I'm not sure that we're going to be listened to, but it is possible that we'll see a 14% state-required increase to out-of-district tuitions, again, which you would see in the accommodated account. Mr. Moore, moving, moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure I was accurate on that.
Yeah.
What was the last time there was an increase? Do you know?
There's usually one every year, but it's small, like a 3%.
Okay, yeah, okay. Just curious. Ms. Simon?
I just want to comment that although it's shocking to hear this, and it's shocking to our budgets, that it's true that these specialized schools for children with special needs don't pay their teachers as well as most public schools, and they work with kids with severe, all kinds of needs, and they do need to staff more, more staff per child in order to provide an appropriate education for children. And these children deserve that education as well, and I think their teachers deserve, you know, I mean, if, if, you know, if there was a pot of gold, you know, that's one of the places I would put money. And I just want to acknowledge that it's a shock to a budget to even mention 14%. And we will have to figure out how to manage that as a town, but I just wanted to state that I think that these children and these schools and these teachers are certainly worth it, just as our teachers are worth the amount that we're, you know, worth what we're giving them, and I wish we could give them more, so.
Thank you, Ms. Simon, and Mr. Foss.
Just a clarifying question, is this affecting the line 74, the tuition on the accommodated budget, is that the 14%?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Monica?
The, the Circuit Breaker is, has a year lag, so there isn't, there isn't any adjustment to it, though, in this plan. And the Circuit Breaker isn't going to go from 75% haha to 80 or anything like that over the minimum.
So I think that the state was also sort of taken by this a little bit, too, scrambling, saying, how are they going to now be funding Circuit Breaker for all of us? So I don't think that we have all of those answers yet.
Has it been voted in yet? Is it a definite, the 14?
I believe, I believe so. But there might be some things on, on the floor that are-
Well, Sincere likes to joke about who agrees with whom. Martha, I totally agree with you, that the staff in the schools, the special education schools, the residential schools, the, they're totally way underpaid. You could double their salary and it wouldn't be enough.
If I could just add, there, there were also some, like, stipulations to those increases in what those, the schools can use the money for. So for example, they, they weren't allowed to pour, like, the increased revenue that they get into, like, executive salaries and other sorts of things like that, so that they are being, it is being used constructively.
That's good.
Thank you. That's good information.
Again, we just, we'll bring this up again in our guideline conversation, Madam Chair, and to make sure we're keeping the ways and means and everyone informed, because it is the, the increase in the accommodated account, if reflective of this 14%, excuse me, is going to be higher than people have seen.
Mr. Moore, I don't know, did you have a comment or question on something earlier on the report?
It was just a quick question, I think it's noted by the double asterisk, but the receipts of negative 7250 were just the rebates for the international students who didn't, or not the international, was it international students who didn't attend?
Yeah, so we got the money before July 1, and then the student ended up not attending, so it got taken back after, so we just wanted to point out why there was a negative in the receipts there.
I just wanted to make sure that was the case, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. The next item is the tutor hourly rates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've met with a lot of our employee groups after settling with teachers. We met with some representatives from our, from our tutors, and Nicole and I met, and these are folks who are paid hourly, they're really working with individual students, they're small groups of students. They do a tremendous job for us, and we've hired some exceptional teachers from being tutors. We also have some tutors who are exceptional retired teachers. We, there's a sort of a mixed group, and we have some tutors who are just phenomenal tutors. So it's a group we felt like we needed to do something with for their compensation. So we wanted to give you a historical perspective, I think, which you see. Nicole did a great job of getting some comps from surrounding communities, and then she proposed some mid-year increases. So I'll let her get into the details with you, but I support these changes, and am looking for support from the committee so that we can, we can move forward. So Nicole, they all have the information that they have.
Yes. So as Dr. Conti mentioned, we have the historical rates on there, so you can see sort of the increases year over year. I think prior to this, I'm not sure that increases were being made regularly, so we sort of had committed to, like, in every other year to try to help catch up, and we haven't reached where we want to be competitively with other districts that also have these same positions. So again, we're sort of at the lower end of other districts' hourly rates. And I just want to note that there are some that are higher, but they, they do not offer full-time or benefit-eligible positions, which does add some cost. In majority, I think there's maybe four or five positions of 34 tutor positions in Burlington, so that are benefit-eligible. So we do offer the number of hours for people to be offered benefits in these positions. So for some of, for some of the districts, like North Rudding, is like $30 an hour, but they don't offer enough hours for people to be offered benefits, which is a considerable expense for the town to pick up. So closing the gap with a, the 10% increase with the benefits is, makes up sort of the difference there. And then a 10% increase midway through the year, which would be January 18th, would be approximately 48,000 increase to budget in this current fiscal year. And then, also to note, so currently we have just two categories, a one through three years, hourly rate, a greater than three years, and then here we wanted to recognize tutors that have been here, greater than 15 years, so adding another sort of level to, to our tutors there. And one last thing that we've sort of seen happen a few times is that tutors were vacating their positions in taking open IA positions in the district. And so this might help sort of alleviate that constant shift where the, the tutor rates would be higher than the initial instructional assistance, top one rates.
So again, I think Nicole did a great job getting all the information and putting a proposal together. I think the total cost to the operating budget, again, roughly $50,000, I think, for the work that these individuals do. I'm recommending the school committee approve the increases, the mid-year increases to the tutor salaries as proposed.
So moved.
Second. I have a comment I'd like to make.
Sure, make the comment first.
I, I actually heard from a couple of the tutors earlier this year. I, I personally was a tutor in another school district, and although my hourly wage was higher than the hourly here that has been in place, we had no sick time, we had no personal days, there was no pay during vacations and things like that. So I, I think that this is a really important thing. It was, and also in the five years I worked there, there were no raises. So I think it's really important. I think that these are really valuable employees who were, add a lot to our instruction, to of our students. There's a lot of skill among this group of staff, and I'm really delighted that you both figured out a way to put in a raise, and I, I'm very much in favor of this. I'm a little disappointed that it's not till 15 years that the additional category comes in, but maybe after this gets in place and we see how it goes for a couple of years, we could, if we need some additional thing, we could look into having that category be not 15 years or something. But I'm really pleased that you figure, and again, Ms. Kasha, you just do things so thoroughly and well, and you really, you looked at other districts, you figured out, you're considering that, you know, we do have benefits that some other districts don't have, and you're really thoughtful about the way you make these kind of plans. So thank you for that, and thank you to all the tutors who've been waiting for a long time, and I hope we are about to pass this raise.
So we had a motion, and we had a first?
Martha seconded it.
Okay, I wasn't, didn't hear the second.
Oh, yeah.
I seconded it. Okay, we'll have another, some discussion comment. Ms. Monica?
I'll be very brief. If there are any tutors watching, you've earned every cent of it.
Thank you, I agree. Okay, so we have a motion, a first and a second, and I think we've had some discussion. Ms. Massardo, I didn't see you have your hand up for any discussion, so I'm going to go ahead and take the vote. So I'll start with you, Ms. Massardo.
Aye.
Ms. Simon? Aye. Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Monica?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's 5-0-0. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Fox Hill School Building Committee.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure, Ms. Massardo or Mr. Kuna, we have a meeting coming up that you may want to announce. And then, I know there are various subcommittees formed, and I am getting my calendar freed up, Ms. Massardo, so I can make some of those meetings. I feel like I'm the limiting factor, but I'll, I'll make sure that I have more time available for the, for the various subcommittees that are being formed. So Bob, that meeting is next Tuesday, is that correct? Or two weeks?
It's January 11th.
January 11th.
So was it a subcommittee meeting I'm looking at?
Yeah, there's a couple of subcommittee times circulating with Terry, but I think we've nailed one.
I go where Terry tells me, Ms. Massardo, so I will, I will, I will be there.
It's fine. Have we had a designer walkthrough this week, right?
Go through the chair? So yes, a brief update yesterday.
We had a designer selection process walkthrough, right? So designer selection process is the part of the MSBA process that we're in right now. We had a great turnout. We had about 15 people, 13 different companies, I believe, showed interest. That just means that they showed up to the building for the walkthrough, that doesn't mean that they will put in proposals, but we do hope that they all do, plus more who didn't show up, submit proposals for designers. Proposals are due December 21st at 1:00 PM, and then to the MSBA, we will have to make a recommendation, or the subcommittee, or the SBC committee by December 29th. So again, the designer walkthrough yesterday, great turnout, and like I said, next week we'll hopefully see some proposals starting to come our way, and that is due by December 21st. So that's it for an update.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. The next item is the BHS update, please.
Again, Madam Chair, we sort of have a standing agenda item, I think we covered that topic already. I think the conversations that are going to be upcoming are going to be a guideline conversation, which the subcommittee will participate in. I think we need to get some sort of guidance for the amount that we were going to spend on warrants. I think we have a commitment to have our, instead of waiting for our warrants to be at the end of our budget process, we really want to present warrants at the front end of our process, so we have more time to get background information to folks. Again, and that is in response to feedback from, from the committee, from town meeting also. I think we need to update our 10-year capital plan to make sure that it's, it's accurate and that we are moving forward in providing that information, so that's coming up. I, I believe, Bob just helped me out, because I just messed up another calendar thing. This is our last school committee meeting prior to January, is that correct?
Right.
So with that, if we get the food service proposals in, again, I will be circulating those to you. If we feel the need for a meeting, then we will potentially post a meeting prior to the end of the year, but we don't currently have a, a meeting posted. But let's, again, be expecting the information that's coming out. And then, because it is, again, the last meeting of 2022, I certainly want to wish all of our families who celebrate Hanukkah or Christmas, or whatever they celebrate, wish them good tidings and peace, is what I would say. So, and thank you all. I think, again, 2022, I can't believe is, is coming to a close, but it is, and I'm always very excited for the solstice, because it just feels like it's dark at 3 o'clock these days.
I thought it was because it was my wedding anniversary.
It is, because it was your wedding anniversary, yes, I apologize, and because it was the wedding that I'm sure added lots of light to the atmosphere back in the day.
You want to keep it up?
There was electricity, was there not? So, okay. So thanks- So thank you all. I think that does it for the agenda, unless anyone has any other comments. I would certainly, I think we're done with the agenda.
Thank you. Anyone have a motion for adjournment, please?
Some of.
Second. First, too. First, we need a first first, right? I didn't make the motion. Anyway, it doesn't matter. And there's no discussion, I'm sure. So Ms. Massardo?
Yay.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
I didn't have to say it and I'm an aye, so it's 5-0-0 and we are finished.